Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular township trustee meeting for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. Would you please join me, rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Can I have a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Lucci?
Present.
Mr. Don Dorfer?
Present.
Mr. McIntosh?
Present. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 17th meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the May 17th, 2023 regular trustee.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Elected officials report fiscal officer.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. As of May 31st, we were forty-two percent of the way through the calendar year. The treasury balances for the twenty-one active funds within the township treasury was eleven point two million dollars. The treasury balance includes four point seven million dollars in funds which are set aside for specific projects. The year-to-date expenditures were thirty-nine percent of the amount appropriated for the year 2023. Revenues received year-to-date are fifty, were fifty-four percent of estimated revenues for 2023. So as you can see, we are well within the budget at this time of the year. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call the town hall fiscal office at 440-354-7516. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Technip. Trustees, Mrs. Lucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very nice Memorial Day ceremony at the cemetery. Thanks to the troops and the musicians that came out to play and thanks to all who attended and for our, for Karen for putting this all together and our staff. We just recorded a talk of the township today at the gazebo. Thanks to Sean and Brian for helping coordinate that and put that on and that'll be available on our website soon. I want to say thank you to everyone's patience regarding Proudy Road. Received a few calls. I believe the second phase started today, so in a couple weeks hopefully that will be completed and it will be nice to have that road done. We did have a staff meeting on Monday with updates from our department heads, including some service work and roads and some recreation events that are scheduled this summer, which we are very excited about, starting with our first concert tomorrow evening. We continue to monitor the fire station project with our expected completion hopefully this summer. I think it's safe to say that it has been a very challenging project with many different layers of complexity, which, which is probably appropriate for a fire station build. We do thank everyone involved in the remaining phases and look forward to the day when it is complete and we can move our service people over there. It is going to be in a very amazing structure. Last month, we did have a Lake County Township Association meeting where we had discussions with some of our county, county officials regarding road and bridge issues, law enforcement, enforcement, which is a continued discussion. I also attended another OTA leadership group meeting with our discussion on strategy and decision-making. It is that time of the year again when we receive many calls regarding speeding in neighborhoods, especially while everyone is outside. We're asking, please be mindful, pay attention to speed limits and people walking and playing in the roads. We also get calls about noise complaints, especially with all the graduation parties going on, so please again be mindful of your neighbors with your outdoor evening activities. I would like to say congratulations to the new graduates and I hope everyone has a great summer. We look forward to our community day and we hope to see everybody tomorrow evening at the concert.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lucci. Mr. Don Dorfer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as Mrs. Lucci said, we had a staff meeting on Monday, had some good dialogue with our department heads. We also, on that day, walked over to tour the new fire station and get some updates on that project. Yes, we've had some challenges, but we're working through those. It's going to be great once we get it opened and it was nice to see such a great project come to fruition and all the different phases that that project has gone through. So it's, we're getting there and it's going to be exciting on the day we can open it. I did receive a few calls since my last meeting. As Mrs. Lucci said there, you know, once the weather breaks, there's more speeding and things of that nature. I received a call from a resident I got back to on Pinecrest. They had some concerns about speeding vehicles there, so I talked with Sergeant Falvery regarding some speed enforcement, some additional traffic enforcement, the speed trailer over there. I had a call from a resident regard, over on South Meadow regarding a concern with the dam restoration project that Administrator Rose is assisting with. And I continue to work with a resident that called me again regarding a zoning complaint that he has believed a neighbor that's outside of the compliance of the zoning in that, at that property. So we're working with him. I'd like to urge everybody, if you get a chance to go out to St. Gabriel Festival this weekend, that starts, that's usually a great event. It's Thursday through Sunday. It's a nice family event. The weather looks nice. And again, yes, the summer concert series starts tomorrow night and that's a great kickoff for our free concert series that the Recreation Department puts on that is funded through sponsorships. So we will, we will be out here tomorrow night to kick off that great event and hope everybody joins us. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don Dorfer. I've had a kind of busy few weeks since we met last. It's been a while. We had that longer month of May and haven't had our meeting, but Memorial Day ceremony was fantastic. I, in addition to the cemetery, I had an opportunity to go to the, we hosted a Sons of the American Revolution, had a ceremony this weekend passed at the cemetery and that was to recognize members that served in the Revolutionary War that are buried in Concord's Cemetery. And they apparently go around the regions, you know, do this. And family came in from out of state, many people from Illinois and I can't think of the other states, but there was a several, there were several people in attendance. It was about an hour and a half long ceremony. It was really nice. And I was reminded again, you know, we celebrated the bicentennial last year and really come to realize how rich the history is in this community and how many things, you know, we have the Old Stone School and how many little corners of the community. Just another event that reminds me how, how alive the history, you know, and of course Concord Township was named after the Battle of Concord in Lexington, the start, start of the war. So really enjoyed that. Want to thank Karen Warner. She did a fantastic job. The Sons actually recognized her with the certificate, well deserved for the energy and effort she put in. I had a chance a few weeks ago to travel to Las Vegas for the ICSC conference, which is the developers and the retailers and so forth. That's where the folks from Starbucks and those different folks and developers, we meet with them about economic development and the JED. Really constructive meetings. Continues to be a lot of interest in Concord. The Sheets project seems to be attracting a lot of energy and there were a lot of folks interested in the, you know, you look at some of the stuff and they were all looking at big projects, but there were a lot of people interested in some of our smaller parcels. We've got a lot of small parcels over there, you know, seven acres here, eight, there and nine. And there was a lot of people said that based on the dynamics of the construction industry and development at this point, that's really lucrative. So we were encouraged about the fact that, that we might see some more growth in our JED. So it was very exciting. Spent a bunch of time working with Administrator Rose in the county. We have a meeting planned to deal with the sewer issue over in Ellison Creek. That's coming up next month. Had a meeting this morning about a potential business look into locating Concord. Met with Administrator Rose, Rena McMahon from the JED, Heather Freeman from the zoning department was there. I'm not sure that's going to work out for them. Landing Concord's a little more expensive than he wants to do for his project, but again, the interest is there, so that's exciting. Spent a lot of time on the fire station project. I know that we all toured it Monday. I toured it several times and been involved in a bunch of meetings, trying to pin down a lot of these last lingering issues, these things that are coming as we're getting closer and closer to completion date. There's just a lot of challenges, but it is fantastic looking building. It's going to be really nice. Got a chance to see all the features. The fire department's going to make use of, it's amazing that we talk about decontamination and of course you automatically think about fires and chemical. And I know Chief told me just the other day, we can't wait to get in here because we had yet another bed bug incident. So we're going to put in elaborate decontamination facility and bed bugs seems to be at least one of the biggest problems, but looking forward to getting that done. And I do want to say that I think the decision we had together to hire an owner's rep has proven invaluable in this process. Having somebody sit outside the architect and the construction contractor has been invaluable. I know it's been a tremendous assistance to myself and Mr. Rose. So just want to get, get that on the record. They've done a fantastic job and look forward to seeing Proudy Road wrap up later this summer. It's good weather, so we should be making some nice progress. And with that, conclude my report and Administrator Rose.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Members of the board, Mr. Technip. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Just three quick things. The waterline project that you voted on a while back and then the county also approved, that project is moving forward. Survey crews recently started on both Auburn Road between Stonewick and Ravenna and then also on Girdle Road between Auburn and Hermitage. That's the first phase in, in getting the plans going. We're going to be sending out a letter to all the residents along the survey areas tomorrow to update them. Mrs. Lucci touched on it, but I did speak with the county engineer's office today on a couple things and Proudy Road, you know, we've been blessed with some fantastic, good, dry weather. And so that project is progressing on schedule. And I'll just remind everybody, if you have any questions or concerns regarding Proudy Road, please contact the county engineer's office. They can be reached at 440-350-2770. And then finally, I would just like to put out a great big thank you to our garden club. You know, just before Memorial Day and then a little bit after Memorial Day, they went to all the township buildings. And if you look outside, we've got beautiful flowers and everything's been tidied up and, and I just can't thank them for all their effort and caring for the beds around the township property. So they're, they're just beautiful. So thank you to the garden club for those efforts. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Fire Department Chief Sabo.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of May, we had a total of two hundred and sixty-four events, including one hundred and seventy-three EMS events with a hundred and twenty-eight transports to area hospitals. We had ninety-one non-EMS events, including seven fires inside of Concord. We had a total of four, including one structure fire and three woods brush fires. The one structure fire was related to an electric vehicle charging station inside of a private garage. Outside of Concord, we responded and assisted in three mutual aids, including two structure fires and one vehicle fire. We gave mutually twenty-two times and received, excuse me, received mutually thirteen times and we had eighty-six overlapping calls for about thirty-three percent of our call volume. Fire Prevention Bureau was busy with fifty-three inspections, accounting for about ninety hours, four plan reviews, accounting for about eight hours, and they also participated in five hours of continuing education. I think I've touched on this before, but all of our staff at the fire department have continuing education hours that are required to maintain our certifications for not only inspector hours, but to hold our fire inspector certificate, but fire EMS instructor and several others. We installed, and I'm proud to say that we installed five residential Knox boxes. We were on an event in, in the month of May where we actually had to force entry and do damage to a house because we had to get in to get a elderly female was in distress and the only way we could get in was to break her door. So that's unfortunate and that's what those Knox boxes are for, so we can gain access to a house without having to break anything. Then we had three of those Knox boxes returned as no longer needed. As far as fire department education, on May 10th, we were, we hosted a CPR and fire extinguisher training for Concord office staff. On May 20th, we did a fire extinguisher and safety training at the U.S. Coast Guard Open House Station Fairport and we made contact with about two hundred people for fire extinguisher and safety training. On May 30th, and then just the other day, they wrapped it up. But I'm, I'm proud of our guys, especially Deputy Chief Padell, Inspector Rot and firefighter Valetto. And I think there was a couple more involved, but their name escapes me right now, but they just started offering Red Cross babysitter courses. So this has been very well received. We actually filled the class and we have a waiting list for the next class. So very much needed and we're glad that, that we were able to fill that need in our community. This week, the Fire Prevention Bureau will be over at St. Gabe's Festival to make sure that it's a, a safe event. We'll be doing tent inspections and we'll be doing food surface area inspections and stuff like that. And it wouldn't be unusual if you see the duty crew over there just browsing with the crowd and, and saying hi to people as they go and get a, get a dinner from the, from the booth. So feel free to stop by and say hi to the firefighters. Lastly, I want to just take a moment and congratulate Deputy Chief Padell and our esteemed Service Director, Tim Brown, for completing their Leadership Lake County course. That's a well deserved and, and it's a great program and I'm glad to see that they went through that and, and got some, some good education and some great networking throughout Lake County. I know when I went through it, it just gave me a great sense of what Lake County has to offer. And so with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Service Department, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, evening.
The Service Department in the month of May has been out making several road and drainage repairs throughout the township. Our concrete crew has made repairs to nineteen curb inlet basins. The drainage crew has performed several ditch maintenance and ditch maintenance projects and culvert replacements. The asphalt crew has made several full-depth crack repairs throughout the township and has begun the crack sealing operations to our asphalt roadways. Cemetery operations, prepping baseball fields, tilling the community garden and mowing township grounds are some of the additional things we were performed by the Service Department in the month of May. The 2023 road resurfacing projects are scheduled to begin the week of June 19th. Noble Ridge subdivision, Gray Road, Huntune Road and Rogers Road will be resurfaced this summer. Cheryl Drive is receiving concrete replacement from the intersection of Route 84, two hundred feet down the hill. This project started on May 30th and is expected to be completed by June 30th. Beginning the week of June 12th, crews from the Service Department will be starting up the concrete slab replacement program and Dura patching repairs throughout the township. We appreciate the residents' patience who are affected during these operations. We ask the residents to use caution when driving through work zones and allow for more travel time when they notice our crews working in their areas. The yardways drop-off at the Service Department closed on Monday, June 5th and will reopen after the Labor Day holiday on September 11th and run through the end of, just end of November. Dates and times will be posted on the Concord website. A new addition to the town hall complex is a concrete pad and picnic table next to the pickleball courts. The picnic table was donated by a resident to provide a spot for people to enjoy while they wait to, wait their turn to play pickleball. The Service Department reminds residents with questions, concerns to contact us at three five, at 440-350-3225 or by email at concordtp.com under Service Department. That completes my report.
Thank you, Chairman.
Excellent. Thank you.
Zoning Department, Mrs. Etherfearn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So during the month of May, the zoning department staff processed forty-five zoning permit applications and collected approximately seven thousand eight hundred dollars in fees. Additionally, staff was busy performing inspections and completed a hundred and thirty-six property inspections with open zoning permits and issued fifty-one zoning certificates of compliances. Staff also received and followed up on twenty-five new complaints about potential zoning violations. A lot of these complaints ranged from tall grass, RVs, campers parked in wrong locations, and some accessory structures being built without permits. So please, before doing any kind of project on your property, if you have any questions about what you need, if you need a permit or what the regulations are regarding a location of something, give our office a call and we'll be happy to explain those regulations to you. Finally, just a quick reminder to our residents that might be preparing to hold a garage sale on this upcoming month, in these upcoming summer months, please keep in mind the following. Garage sales shall not occur any more than three times in a twelve-month period. You're allowed to have one temporary sign on your property, advertising. And additionally, you can have one off-site sign with permission of an off-site property owner. You cannot post the sign on any kind of utility poles, street signs, traffic control devices or within the public right of, right away. Well, you don't need a permit to have a garage sale or even put the sign up. Any sign that's not displayed in accordance with these regulations, that the zoning department may remove those. So with that, just have a safe summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Recreation Department.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Recreation Department is getting ready for the start of a busy summer. I'm just going to recap a couple of things. I know Mr. Rose touched on this and so did the trustees during the Talk of the Town, but just want to recognize the garden club as well. They obviously do a lot of work here and keeping our properties looking beautiful. Their Mother's Day plant sale at the community room was a huge success. I don't know if you were able to get inside there at all, but they really did a wonderful job of setting that community room up and I think they sold out of just about everything there. And we look forward to continuing to host that event for years to come. I think that's what the plan is. So I think we're looking forward to that. And obviously taking care of all the properties. And I just want to give a special shout out to Jean Lowheiser for all the actual work that she does here for taking care of the properties. I'm not totally convinced that she sleeps at night. I think she does gardens and water stuff throughout the township. So thanks to Jean for all the work she does. Some of the recent events we've had, we had over sixty people for a spring themed bingo and that was sponsored by University Hospitals. They supplied great prizes and giveaways. They had their stroke coordinator who after each bingo game gave facts about stroke prevention because it was Stroke Prevention Month. And they also supplied fruit and vegetable tray. So thank you to University Hospitals for their continued support of our programs. And just this afternoon, we had fifty-seven seniors in the building for a presentation by Susan Cannavino for The Adventures of President Eisenhower. The second session of our intro to pickleball started last Saturday. We're sold out of that as well. We had twenty participants for that for an eleven and twelve o'clock session. So obviously pickleball is very popular and the courts get used all the time. So our next session for that will be in September. So if anyone's interested in calling or signing up, just call the Recreation Department. Some upcoming events, we have our, as everyone has mentioned already, start of our concert series is tomorrow, June 8th, at the gazebo from seven to nine. We have the Big North Band playing country music. We have La Catrina, which is a Mexican food truck, and East Coast Custard, along with other vendors that will be there as well. For the full concert schedule, please visit the Concord Township website. Next Tuesday, June 13th, is the start of our Rookie Sports Club baseball program. We have thirty kids signed up for that between two programs, the T-ball and coach pitch. That's another great number for our, for our youth population here in Concord. So just continue to show the need and desire for us to, to target that population. Our tennis camps this summer are actually going to be coached by Joe Morgan as our normal tennis instructor is having some surgery on his shoulder. So those run June 28th to the 30th or July 19th to 21st. And we are actually completely filled on our seven to ten year, seven to ten age group with twenty kids. And then we still have a couple spots left for our five and six-year-olds. So that's great on those numbers as well. And then on June 30th is our next scheduled blood drive at the community room. That's from 10 to 3 and you can sign up by visiting redcrossblood.org. For our fifty-five-plus age group on June 14th, which is next Wednesday, our own facility attendant, Pete Booth, will be performing his reenactment of the Battle of Normandy, which is also Flag Day. Pete is an experienced World War II reenactor. He brings his own memorabilia as his parents were veterans of the war. So that's great. June 21st is Pain Free Living with wellness coach Karen Martin as she goes over alternatives to taking pain meds and how you can change your lifestyle, basic small changes to food choices, exercises, et cetera, to help alleviate discomfort. And then June 28th is our patriotic themed bingo. And then as I always like to mention, for anyone interested in getting out and hiking, our weekly hiking club with Rachel Lamb is on Thursdays. And for more information, just contact the Recreation Department. And lastly, for our upcoming events, the Old Stone School, that is with our historian and organizer of Old Stone School, Dan Maxon. He has been hard at work, entertaining tours at the schoolhouse, doing new displays and trying to acquire new artifacts. He does an amazing job for us over there, as we all know. Dan has, has a wealth of knowledge about Concord and he really does a, a lot for us and really enjoys his job over there. So some of his upcoming events, he's got a pre-concert open house and that's on June 15th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. He has public tours, open house on June 25th from 4:00 to 5:30. July 3rd is a full moon, open house from 8:30 to 10:00 p.m. And then on our community day, he's doing open houses from 10:00 to 11:00 and 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. The community garden is up and running with gardeners working on their plots already, getting them ready for the summer. Just want to give a special thanks to Service Director Brown and his crew for helping to get the garden ready to go by doing some tilling and dropping off some material for the gardeners to use as well. Everyone should have received their Eat Grapevine beginning of June with all the information and hopefully everyone received and enjoyed their summer edition of the grapevine. We tried to improve a lot on the brochure, especially in the Recreation Department, so hopefully everyone enjoyed that. And if you didn't, just please note that it was my first time, so don't be too harsh. And lastly is just our normal update of our community day. That's on Saturday, August 12th. You should have seen a list of events in the summer grapevine. Some of the key things, we have a new bike education and safety program at Jordan Creek. And that includes a family ride down the Greenway Corridor, the return of the Concord Parade, which has not been around for a couple years, so we're bringing that back. If we have any businesses or groups, HOAs, residents, whoever is interested in being a part of that, contact the Recreation Department. We would love to have you in there. The Fire Department Pancake Breakfast, which I met today with Chief about, which we're going to be adding a few new things to that. So we're looking forward to that and that'll be over here at Town Hall. And then some of the new features, just Kids World, expansion of Kids World, DJ, karaoke, bounce houses, and then our bands are Blue Evolution and Jersey Beats. And outside of that, just please continue to sign up for the Eat Grapevine and read the Concord Township website as we're constantly updating that and adding new programs. So with that, that includes my, concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Concord Law Enforcement, Sergeant Falvery.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the month of May of 2023, we had a lot of pickleball fights, a lot of people waiting in line, hitting each other with retinoids. But no, we responded to 1,268 calls for service for May. Five were injury accidents, sixteen were property damage accidents. We had a male arrested for possession of controlled substance, another male for meth and marijuana, another male for operating a vehicle for, while intoxicated, and a female for disorderly conduct. We responded to fifty-six residential and commercial alarms. We issued twenty-three citations for various traffic violations and a hundred and ninety-four various traffic violation warnings. Forty-five suspicious circumstances, vehicles and persons, fifty-five traffic complaints. We had ten traffic details set up and eighteen welfare checks, checking down various residents for various reasons. St. Gabe's, we are, festival, we're prepared for that. We'll have a large law enforcement presence, friendly law enforcement presence, just like last year. Traffic complaints, as far as those go, we're paying attention to them and I'm reaching out to people who are having issues on their various roadways or developments and coming up with resolutions for those. Proudy Road Construction, the foreman did reach out to me today. He, I have not received a call back from him after returning his phone call, but it sounds like we'll be present for some of the road construction to help mitigate some of the issues with that. All of our deputies will be going through a CPR course here shortly. We just actually had a deputy save somebody from choking at Auburn and then two separate incidences in a neighboring township where deputies performed CPR, arriving on scene before fire and EMS. before fire and EMS, which resulted in a positive outcome for the patient. We had a burglary in Concord on Keystone. This happened actually in June, but I'll cover it now since we, since it's fresh. We posted the mail on Facebook, relative reached out and identified him. We actually picked him up today on a warrant in Geneva. We'll be doing a press release on that, and that will be on the Facebook, on the Sheriff's Office Facebook page and our app news section for information on that issue. He was a Geneva resident, so he was not local. Flock cameras, I just got an update from Flock today. They submitted all the permits to Ohio, and Ohio says that they should have the permits ready to go within the next, hopefully, thirty days. So we are moving along on that slowly but surely. It's the state. Other than that, we are looking good. If you guys don't have any questions or issues.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, moving into the next portion of our agenda, the audience.
Brian Massey, eighty-one ninety-six. On behalf of lobbyists for citizens, we're a grassroots organization, and I just wanted to make, make you aware of, we have been looking into the No Waka issue. And the Timberlake Mayor and I went down to a No Waka meeting, and quite frankly, I'm really quite shocked. I thought No Waka was much more than what I, what I really see, thought it was a, you know what it is, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They are also a conduit for the Ohio Department of Transportation taxes, money that is funneled back to the counties. I was originally thinking that we should stay in the No Waka, and now that I, I see them in action, they, they started out as roads and bridges and clean water and clean air, who, you know, who doesn't want that? But they have really branched out into the climate change and more of a progressive agenda. And really, what I heard at the four meetings that I heard on a, on a Friday was, they really want to change the life, the way of life in, in Lake County and the outlying regions. They're talking about, you know, getting us out of, out of cars, having everyone with the electrical vehicles. They're spending four thousand dollars on each charging station that takes eight hours to charge your car. They also want everybody to walk to work, ride their bikes, and that just, it just won't happen in Lake County. We are debating with the Commissioner Hammercheck and also Commissioner Plechnik. I contend, along with the former commissioner in Geoghegan County, that we could be better off if we were to align ourselves with Geoghegan County as opposed to staying in this six-county area where Cuyahoga County and the City of Cleveland dominate, and most of the money is, is going there. I know Commissioner Hammercheck at the last meeting did try to make them aware that they have to be more cognizant of the, the needs of the outlying suburbs. We're, we're going down again this Friday, and I, I will report, but as of right now, I'm, I'm saying that, that we're going to make that an election issue, you know, next year about staying in No Waka. The other things that I have, was at a narcotics meeting today, and I was flabbergasted when the director was talking about crystal meth in Lake County. It is, he said that's the, the drug of choice, and the reason is, and then you put the numbers to it, I asked him after the meeting, what does a crystal meth of cocaine and fentanyl, what do they cost on the, on the streets? And he was, he said, that an ounce of crystal meth will cost three hundred and fifty dollars, you know, per ounce. And I said, well, what is a normal drug user's, I said, they don't take an ounce, right? No, they take a gram. So if they're twenty-eight point three grams in an ounce, an average dose of crystal meth would be in the, you know, twelve-dollar range. Cocaine, it's eighteen hundred dollars per ounce, which would be like sixty-three dollars per dose, and fentanyl is over two thousand dollars, which is seventy-two. But what we are concerned about, and, Sir Darnold, Frank, I know you know this because of your, your position, that we've got the Sinaloa, you know, drug cartel now in, in Lake County, and with the open borders that we have, we're just, we are ruining families, we're ruining lives, and something has to be done. The average citizen has to step up and say, we're, enough is enough. Concerned about the grooming and indoctrination of our children. Third item I have is the pandering obscenity in, in schools. I've been going to Riverside, Willbe East Lake, and to the Mentor School Districts, and I'm very concerned what I, I see. Started out in Mentor, and I did write letters to the prosecutors of Mentor and Mentor on the lake. I received a response from the law director saying that they can't get involved because they can't give legal advice to a separate political subdivision, meaning the school. I then took it to the Lake County prosecutor, Mr. Coulson. I want to see if he's going to get involved because there are residents in Concord Township that pay taxes into the Mentor School District and who, you know, who is representing them. I will, tomorrow, I will, I, I will approach Mr. Hackman to see what the Lake County prosecutor is going to do. We think that the school's in violation of Ohio Revised Code twenty-nine oh seven point three two one of pandering obscenity to minors. Very important issue to us, and I will let you know what they do. The other question I have is regarding the fire station. I understand that we spent nine point nine million, please correct me if I'm wrong with these numbers, but we, we went way back when with the safety levy, we only asked for eight million dollars. So there was a shortfall. Was that shortfall because of inflationary costs, increasing costs? Where are we at with the budget on the fire station?
So, well, the budget is the nine point eight, nine point whatever, round, nine or nine. So we had a bid opening, you know, if you recall, once the levy funds were secured, there was, we put them to bid together, both projects, and they came in. They exceeded our estimates, so we had to rebid it, owner's rep.
When you say two projects, you're talking about the Proudie Road and...
Both, the Proudie Road, both stations together.
Yes, I thought there was two stations.
What would it come to? And we went that route, just to test the waters, so to speak. It came in, we had to reject them because it was over engineers' estimates, so the cost inflation that we saw in the project was really just due to timing. It was supply chain, I mean, construction cost, everything multiplied from the time the levy passed in twenty-one, twenty, the time it was bid. I mean, read the news, supply chain, everything went up. So we got, we got burned in that. The, the time it took to, to cure levy funds and get the project out the door.
So, I said, because of extenuating circumstances, we're two million dollars over budget?
We're not over budget. The prod, the station's going to be built. The cost of construction from the time that we went out and the engineers' estimates and campaigned the levy to the time we got it to bid, cost of construction went up. The engineers' estimates were no good because of everything that happened in two thousand twenty-one with supply chain.
Yes, but, but we had many discussions early on.
Correct, so, yes, so.
That people were concerned. Nobody could foresee, I, I don't argue that point, nobody could see the supply chain, you know, issues with COVID and the, the rampant inflation.
So from the standpoint of the project to date, we're on track for how the project was bid. So we were, were forced to, we had, you know, it was either don't do it or proceed with the project, and as we had money to use, we planned, you know, that was within the grand scheme of the overall budget, so we proceeded with station one.
It, it sounds like, though, if we're looking now at a Proudie Road, which we were arguing at that time, that Proudie Road probably should have been done first because it should have been done a long time ago because it is not really up to the standards. But now what we're saying, we're going to have to go back to the taxpayers for additional funding for Proudie Road.
You're saying that, we're not saying that.
So we're going to be able to build the Proudie Road also?
We are going to proceed with Proudie Road, and we are looking at those costs and budgets right now.
All right. The, the money that we use, I understand we used quite a bit of money from the JED funds. Is that, was that originally planned, or was that a, a product of, we, we didn't have the funds in the general fund?
Would have to go through the JED. I, I'm not going to answer that now, I'd have to look at the reports, and I'd be happy to entertain specific questions and answer those.
Okay, I, I really would be interested in that.
Not going to get into that. Too, too many, too many checks and too many things that have happened to generically answer that question.
Okay, I'd be glad to talk to you about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience? Okay, hearing none, old business, seeing none, we'll move into new business.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May financial report.
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will make a motion to approve Resolution two zero two three dash zero nine, which is the tax budget for two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
I, I would recommend a roll call vote.
Any discussion?
I think Mr. Teck, Teckner covered it.
Yeah.
Sorry. Nice report, Jim, thank you. And with that, could you please roll call vote?
Mrs. Lucci?
Yes.
Mr. Don Dorff?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve purchase order in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred to American Fireworks for two thousand twenty-three firework display for the Concord Community Day.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three ayes.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve PO two striker in the amount of seven thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents for preventative maintenance services on heart monitors and the Lucas device.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three ayes.
Mr. Chairman, I moved to approve purchase order to FGMA, the amount of five thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents for cost estimates related to Fire Station Two project.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three ayes. And lastly, future meetings and announcements, Mr. Teckner?
Excuse me, on June ninth at eight A.M., a JED meeting will be held at Town Hall. On June fourteenth at seven P.M., a BZA meeting at Town Hall will be held. On June nineteenth, Town Hall will be closed in observance of Juneteenth Day. And on June twenty-first, trustee office hours will be held in the conference room from six thirty to seven thirty P.M. And at seven thirty P.M. on June twenty-first, a trustee meeting will be held at Town Hall.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.